Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order. The first thing is the approval of the agenda.
I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I did neglect to add the agenda addition as part of my motion.
I don't think I got that.
Never mind, there's no agenda addition. But it's on my desk.
We'll stick with the original.
Yep, that's great.
Okay.
It's Francis.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
I'm ignoring.
Second.
Motion to second to pay the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes from November 21st, 28th, and our work group on November 14th. Need approval on them.
Ms. Chair, I'd move for approval of the minutes from November 21st, 28th, and November 14th.
Okay. You got a second on that?
Second.
Motion to second to approve all the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You okay with that, Jackie? You got a strange look on your face, I'm sorry. Thought I goofed up already.
Mr. Chair, we did skip over citizens to be heard.
Let's do that now.
Oh, we haven't voted yet, but after that, we have citizens.
Didn't we vote? All in favor of the agenda, I thought we voted, but...
Aye. That was on the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, let's go back to citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard that is not on the agenda? Anybody on the computer?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We'll go on to our first item, a public hearing. Do we need to... Have a motion to open the hearing here?
Move to open the hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion to open the hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, commissioners. I have Todd Hagan on the line from Ellers. He is going to be doing a presentation, but just a quick tee-up. As you recall, back on November 14th, the Clay County Board approved Resolution 23-27, calling for a public hearing here this evening to address our five-year capital plan and our intent to authorize issuance, sale, and use of general obligated capital improvement plan bonds. And with that, I'll turn it over to Todd.
Todd, you're not on yet.
Todd, we can't hear you.
Just a minute.
Three, testing one, two, three.
There we got you.
Now we got you, go ahead, Todd.
Well, it takes a while to get from Roseville over to Morehead. I get it. It's a long ways. So, great, thanks for having me. Thanks, Steve, for the introduction of the public hearing. So, like Steve had mentioned, on November 14th, we were talking about financing the county DMV and detox facilities. The board passed a resolution to start the bonding process. You know, we wouldn't be selling bonds until January 23rd, so in between the 14th of November. And then, we have to squeeze in a public hearing here to authorize the preliminary approval of the bonds via a capital improvement plan. And I know we talked about sort of all the components that were going into this, but in front of the board is a resolution to consider not to exceed $6,450,000 of bonds. You would adopt this capital improvement plan, which really is just a financing mechanism for us to be able to issue bonds at the end of January. And then, what we're gonna also do is apply some unused bond proceeds from the 2017B bonds, a little shy of a million dollars, to both of those facilities. So, we would really only be financing the DMV at that time. I think the detox is taken care of with all the other funding sources when it comes time to issue the bonds. So, again, we have to hold a public hearing, that's what we're here for tonight. You know, we put a notice in the paper that you authorized on November 14th. Just had to be in there 14 days, at least 14 days ahead of today. In the meantime, Lori and Steve and I had put together that little finance plan. I think the board probably has that in front of them. It's not too complicated, it's just got a lot of statutory requirements. It's got some calculations in it. Again, the authority to reach back to the 2017B bonds to get that amount able to be spent now, untrapped from that bond issue, to be spent on this new purpose, or repurposing part of that old bond issue. There is a little bit of a story of the need for the DMV and the detox facilities located in Morehead. There's eight sort of points that need to be described under statutory law. If you look through there, I won't go through the answers, but we had to talk about the condition of the county's existing infrastructure, including the project, the likely demand for these improvements, the estimated cost of the improvements, the available public resources, level of overlapping debt of the county, the relative benefits and costs of alternative uses of these funds, operating costs of the proposed improvements, and any alternatives for providing services more efficiently through shared facilities with other local government units. So, eight points had to be described in there, and they are. So, if you have any questions on that, let us know. It's really sort of, again, a financing capital improvement plan. It's a one snapshot of these 23, 2024, 2023 projects, and that's really it. So, that's what the public hearing is about tonight. And again, there's, you know, after you close the hearing, then you would consider the resolution, you could approve the resolution, you could prove it at a lesser amount, you could deny approval, you could table the action, but I think we really want to see this keep moving forward, so, you know, we can capture, you know, the bond interest rates right here in January coming up, and sort of get to that, and get these projects fully funded. So, I'll yield to the board right now if you have any questions or comments from me or from staff.
Any questions for Mr. Hagan? I guess then we fully understand him, okay. Steve, you have anything further?
I would just report to the board that I have not received any comment from the public at all.
Yep, and we had the draft of that plan on file, too, during notice publication, so the public was able to take a look at it if they still wanted to, so.
Okay, I guess, anybody in the audience, any questions?
Move to close the hearing. Second.
You got a motion to second to close the hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hagan.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, we have work going on as we speak on the DMV. The ground has been broken, and now we need to come up with the remainder of the funds to pay for it. And so with that, I would move Resolution 2023-33. Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve the resolution to the bonding funding. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if that has to be a roll-call vote?
Go for it, Jack.
Does it have to be further? It talks about a three-fifths, but I just think...
Okay.
It's a three-fifths of the membership, you could roll-call if you wanted to.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Evinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Okay, most passes.
Thank you, and thank you, Todd.
Thank you, yep.
Next thing is request approval for amendment to the Red River Regional Dispatch Center joint powers agreement.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, commissioners, thanks for having me. Admittedly, so I don't have a lot of information on this, I may have to defer to Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Evinger, because I believe they may have a little bit more information. But this is a first amendment to the joint powers agreement that we have with the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. It's pertaining to the land agreement for the new dispatch center location. And to my understanding, this has to do with purchase of the land agreement and/or not purchasing the land in the future. That's my knowledge of it. Commissioners Campbell, Commissioner Evinger, if you have anything further of that, please join.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, this is simply, we made an amendment to the joint powers agreement. The property is in the Southern Industrial Park over in Fargo, near their Public Safety Training Center. The lease is $1 a year, no, $1 for 50 years. And we had to make several provisions in JPA in the event that, in future years after the 50-year lease is up, there may be a desire to extend it or to, by the city of Fargo, to sell the land. It's doubtful that will happen, but in the event it does, the Red River Regional Dispatch Center will get first opportunity to buy the land, just to address some of the concerns about long-term disposition of the land. It's been reviewed by the executive board and passed. Everybody was comfortable with these decisions, and we just need to bring it on, and each individual member of the RDC partnership is having a vote on it, and that's what we're doing tonight.
With that, you're gonna make a motion?
Yes, I am. With that, I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Red River Regional Dispatch Center joint powers agreement.
Okay.
Second.
And we got a motion to second to approve the agreement with the Red River Regional Dispatch Center joint powers. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. With that, we go on to Matt Jacobson. He requests approval to reappoint Kurt Sherdivan to the second term on the planning commission. Matt, you on?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and commissioners. For you tonight to request approval for a second term on the Clay County Planning Commission for Kurt Sherdivan. Kurt has served one term on the commission and has been a very reliable member representing our rural or at-large position on the commission.
This man, Kurt, is also on the Township Board of Oakport.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the reappointment of Kurt Sherdivan to a second term.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion to second to reappoint Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of the Pelican Rapids leach aid contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. We've entered into an agreement with Pelican Rapids to haul our leach aid from the landfill to their facility where they can treat it and put it back out in the environment. Essentially, it's gonna save us roughly two cents a gallon, which is $125 per load, and could add up to $50,000 per year if we were to haul over leach aid there. We will not let our contract with Fargo go, so we will be hauling some of it to Fargo as well. But with this contract, we can save money for the county, so I would request that we approve this contract, and it has been looked over by the attorney's office, and they have also agreed that it's okay, so. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to sign the agreement.
Okay. We got a motion to sign the agreement with Pel...
Second.
Motion to second to approve this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to say briefly, I appreciate the opportunity for collaboration with this. Certainly, networking to find where we can find some savings is really a great option, and I know we're continuing to have some dialogue to seek out additional collaborations, and just really want to thank you and staff and others for the work that we're doing to make those happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, good job on that. Next thing, we got the rest of the crew. Request approval for the purchase of a used garbage trailer from BNT.
Yes, we are in the process of setting up another agreement with Becker County where we would swap waste, actually swap hauling. We would pick up a trailer in Becker County, bring it back to Morehead. They would in turn pick up a trailer in Morehead and bring it back to Becker County for us. With that, they have purchased four brand-new trailers. We have three already that are brand-new, and their former hauler has offered to sell us one of their better trailers for $33,000. One of the drivers and I went and looked at it and feel it would be a good purchase for us. That way, we would have four, they would have four, and we can swap trailers evenly. It would make the transition, and the moving parts fall together better, so I would look for approval for the $33,000 to purchase a trailer.
Okay. Any questions or motion, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, sure, it makes sense, and been talking about this for a while, so, motion to purchase a used garbage trailer for $33,000.
Second.
We got a motion to second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I might follow up on my prior comments. I had the opportunity to speak with Becker County Commissioners last week, and they've also expressed excitement about dealing with this together. Certainly feel like there's a great opportunity for savings within the partnership, so thanks for the work.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a movement, request approval of video storage for new withdrawal management detox facility in Department of Motor Vehicle building. All right?
Good evening, commissioners, thank you. This evening, we're looking for approval for electronic or digital storage for the security cameras for the two new buildings up by the solid waste facility, the detox withdrawal management facility, and the new DMV. By combining these, the storage from two buildings into one, we save a few thousand dollars. So, the two quotes that came in at, the first one was $25,995.25. The second quote was $81,902 even. The request is to purchase the lower of the two, and we'll be using the FFNE funds out of each building's project to purchase these.
Okay.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but why would one be three times higher?
Just, we put out the requirements, and those are the quotes that came back, so it varies quite a bit, and we feel the lower of the two is sufficient to meet the needs of this project.
I certainly agree, so I'll make a motion to that.
And a motion to purchase the storage?
Yeah, for $25,995.25.
Okay.
Second.
And a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, all right. Request approval of statewide local affordable housing aid guarantee selection. Looks like Rhonda's gonna take this.
Okay. I am here in follow-up to agenda that the board acted on on September 14th. So, just to recap, this is regarding the statewide affordable housing aid that the counties, actually counties and cities, were allocated in the omnibus tax bill of 2023. The aid was payable, we're gonna receive our first payment in December of 2023, and then we'll receive our 2024 allocation in two payments, one in July and one in December. Those amounts for each year is $160,004.2. In September, we came before the board, September 14th, the board approved the issuance of a request for proposal for responders to respond to the RFP and indicate how they would use the funds in compliance with the statutory guidelines. We did issue that request for proposal, and we did receive a sole responder, that responder being the Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. They did request the full allocation of 2023 and 2024 in the amount of $320,804. And I believe in your packet, I did provide their full response to the RFP. We did have a committee that met to review the response. We did determine that the proposal did meet all of the requirements that were set out in the RFP. The responder outlined in their RFP how they would use the funds, and the committee did feel that the use of those funds did meet the spirit of the law. And so, we are recommending approval of Clay County HRA for the amount of $320,804. And with that approval, I would work with our county attorney's office to develop a contract for those funds to go for 2023 and 2024.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I was part of that discussion we had last Friday, right, or Thursday, and Steve was there. Who else? Rory Beal?
Yep.
Matthew?
Yep, we had, and Kirsten Lepard was there.
Yeah, there we go. Anyway, just strongly my view, Dar did a very good job in deep detail of all that they'd be doing. You know, some of this she had talked to us about as a board several months ago, but I look at this grant that we received, and in my view, it just really fits one-time money that fits perfectly for what they're doing. The buildings that they're, you know, it's a large majority of it is, or half of it, I guess is strictly for rehab, and buildings out in Yulin and in Delworth, older buildings needing really critical repair right away. So, I think we're gonna see that the first $160,000 that comes out this month will be used quickly. And they're already starting, they've had some initial bids, so they know their numbers are good. Security cameras, I know we've talked about as a group a little bit before, when they were talking about mainly Gateway Gardens. These are for cameras in Yulin and in Delworth. These places don't even have key fobs for people to get in, and especially in Delworth, there's been multiple problems with people just going through the doors. So, I think a lot happened, they'll be, take care of that. As far as the updates to the electrical code, I've been around, you know, just running through the home builders and realtors. I know there's been changes to the commercial applications for GFIs over the years, so that update. If there is one I just want to speak a little bit to, and I'm looking at page 80 of our packet. If you go to, on their application, and you help me with this, if you will, Rhonda, on the $133,000, some of that certainly is gonna be for administration, but a larger piece, or a big piece, is gonna be for leveraging other communities such as Barnesville. I know it's talked, there was one other town, city that brought things up, but will help leverage them in future grants, too, which they aren't normally able to get because they're so small, and by having a partner, as they move forward, you know. So, anyway, for all those reasons, I strongly support this request. Again, I think it fits in detail. I guess Dar just showed up, if you have any other comments or questions for her.
Yeah, and I would just add on the owner-occupied housing piece of it, the $133,000, and I know Dar is here, so you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe all of that would go directly to the owner-occupied rehabilitation, so there's no administration costs in that $133,000. And that's correct. The target was for Holly and Barnesville under that category, yep.
Any other questions? Got a motion, any more discussion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the statewide local affordable housing aid grant to HRA. Is that enough?
Can we include the dollar amount within the motion, please?
What?
Can we include the dollar amount?
Okay. Got a motion, there's a second?
Second.
We got a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Dar, since you're here, we're a little bit ahead of time, but approval to appoint members in the Clay County HRA Board of Commissioners. Looks like you got three new members you want to appoint.
Good evening, Chair Gross, commissioners, my apologies. I was sitting out in the lobby watching, and it finally dawned on me that perhaps it was our agenda items. Yes, we are requesting two appointments, one to complete a partial term, and another for a full term to the HRA Board. We are required to have a minimum of five members. We have a member who has asked to be, have her term shortened due to some personal and health issues that she's dealing with, and so we did advertise for these positions extensively, and have brought forth on behalf of our board two recommendations for appointment, the first being Bethany Peterson, who is a mental health practitioner and therapist who owns her own practice from Barnesville, Minnesota, and the next is Greg Lemke, who has a long history in law enforcement, as well as working at the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, and long experience with the Morehead Public Housing Agency Board.
Okay. Any questions or motions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Bethany Peterson to a five-year term, and Greg Lemke to complete the term of the departing commissioner that would end January 31st, 2026.
Okay, we got a motion to appoint two of those two people. Is there a second?
A second.
Yeah, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, your next thing is to request approval of the Clay County HRA to levy and collect the special benefit tax for 2024.
Well, I know you've all heard quite a bit from me on this topic, so I will be happy to answer any questions as they may arise. As you know, you did give consent to a $500,000 special benefit tax levy in September. However, we received the message, both our board and our staff, that that would be unlikely to be supported at that amount prior to the end of the year. to be supported at that amount prior to the end of the year. So we went back and, at the suggestion of the Commission, also applied for the state affordable housing age, which, thank you, I believe that was just approved, to meet some of the needs that were identified. The state affordable housing need allocation was obviously for two years. What we had originally proposed in the levy was primarily a one-year situation. So we put our nose to the grindstone and we made the request to the City of Morehead for state affordable housing aid as well, for projects that were specifically located within the city. And they, they did approve that for $85,000 at one of their last meetings in November and have invited us to apply for any competitive funds that will also be coming up. They have not released those RFPs as of this date. So we are still making a request for the consent to the $250,000 tax levy for 2024. And the primary uses of this are to support the rental assistance programs for families and children. And when I, I was looking at this and I realized that we serve about 1,200 kids each and every day. And then I looked at our request and I realized for each household in Clay County that were requesting to pay property taxes on this, it's about point eight cents per child that these funds would be supporting. About 5% of the entire Clay County population is using our services on any daily basis. And so today, our staff had the privilege of moving in two families from Churches United into one of our properties, that they will be there as having a home for Christmas. And it was the facilities that were just recently renovated with the $6 million that we received in funding from the state of Minnesota, where we used tax levy resources in order to leverage that $6 billion in rehabilitation. So we converted a few of those units into permanent supportive housing for families who are exiting shelter or are living in their cars. And these are the types of programs that we are requesting that the community continue to support. You'll see there's $75,000 for uses in this request, as well as $75,000 that we're asking to use for leverage for the new resources that may become available. As you've heard me say before, for the leveraged dollars, we've had about a 13 to 1 return on that investment. And so we're asking you to make that investment in the future. And then the additional $100,000 is for the rehabilitation work, much, which will now be supported by the state affordable housing aid. Those dollars that we requested in there are all for hard costs, actual costs of construction, materials, et cetera, going into the projects. Unfortunately, we don't have the administrative capacity to get all that money out the door, plus request additional funds from the state without appropriate staffing and support for that. And so the levy request is to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dar, when you came to us in September, the HRA's request was for $500,000. And if I recall, the conversations was you'd need $500,000 this year and probably $500,000 next year, and who knows, $500,000 years after that. So I guess my question being, now that you've, the board has authorized and granted you the $320,000, and you're still asking for $250,000, that, to me, that adds up to 570. That's more than your original ask. And, you know, and then in addition to that, now you've, you've gotten information from Morehead saying you'll get another 85 from them. In trying to meet your goals and objectives, I, you know, I think the, where, where with, between the three, the 320 and the 180, that would be, that would get, get you to five, where would you be short?
So I, I understand that question when you're looking at it. The county chose to issue the two years' worth of funding from the state affordable housing aid through this one granting procedure.
Right.
Our levy request had only included half of the funding that was included in the SAHA package. So what we did is we shifted some of those future goals into this RFP request that had not been included completely in the original levy request.
So when you came to us and asked for $500,000, you only had half of that in there?
We had $160,000 less than what, in that request than what is in here with the SAHA request, yes. So that is the difference in that we are looking forward to now with those funds, to have additional money to support homeowners. As the costs have risen, the construction materials, et cetera, and I know I discussed this with the committee, that we would be able to provide additional matching funds for those homeowners, since the state funds are limited to $24,999. And getting a new roof, windows, or siding, it's hard to do for those amounts. That would be the reason for the difference.
Any other questions? Did we approve a levy increase for them before?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the board did approve a half a million dollar allotment earlier, but it asked Dar to go back and look at trimming that for, for, by this evening.
Okay. So what are you asking for now totally?
We, we are asking for the consent to the $250,000. The Commission did the prior consent to the $500,000 with the understanding that, that would not necessarily be supported before the end of the year, and asked us to go back and look at different options under that.
And at that, and at, and at that point was when the conversation came up about the potential for the 320 being from a separate source that could help meet that, that goal of 500,000.
Okay.
So, and that, and that, that's kind of why, you know, we talked about on a preliminary, establishing the 500,000 with the idea in mind that, that some of this stuff could be accomplished by December, which would then be able to lower that levy from 500 to something less. And that's where I was making the question, if, if it was 500 before and we've granted both the, you know, all of the 320 to it, why couldn't that levy be more like 180 instead of 250? That's, that's where I was going with that.
Maybe I can ask a question along that line. Is not, I'll just say two things here, isn't part of that the rehab that's being done for the affordable housing that wasn't in there before?
That is correct.
And that's part of it. The other part would be, we talked about this, it's, it's admin.
Yeah, for the levy request, if I may, the reason the levy request stated the 250,000 is because it, it has not been, right now, we believe that the SAHA funding is only for hard costs, materials, construction, architecture, those types of activities. Now, the, all of these specifics have not been released by the state on that program, but as of this point in time, after talking to the legislators, who are the ones who sponsored the bill, that is our understanding. So the levy dollars are requests for things that are not eligible to be expended on those SAHA funds. So in order to get those SAHA funds out the door, we need to be able to actually pay somebody to do some work to do it. And so that, that is why I included in there some of the consequences if we are unable to support that.
So one question I did have, when you mentioned Morehead and that commitment for the 85 grand, is that, is that one time? I mean, is that one year or have they talked about it continuum or?
That was just the portion of the 2023 allocation. They're receiving about $260,000 per year for 2023 and 2024. They have, they will be doing an RFP process similar to what the county has done, but they have not initiated that process as of today. The same date that they approved the $85,000 for the HRA, they also approved the staff to go forward to develop the RFP for the remaining dollars. And they were explicitly said in the board minutes that we were certainly invited and eligible to apply for additional dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just maybe want to clarify for the public because it is complex. One, we appreciate the work that you do in the communities that you serve. It is heart, heartfelt, hard work, as is a lot of the work that other department heads that are sitting in this room do. And so I get it and I completely understand it's very tricky. I think for the public, though, it's important to know because of a lot of the dollars that were made available, while we may be cut, talking about cuts today, the funds that are coming into the community are upwards of what they've ever been before. And so what we're trying to do is balance that delicate line between what we're granting here and what is also available, but what is also a shock that some people had in November when those statements came as well. And so I, I, I want the public to know that we're, there's some huge gratitude for the funds that were made available and we're trying to leverage as much as we can with that, while also being very cognizant of folks that are homeowners and sometimes face homelessness themselves because of a burden of statements. And it is a very challenging and hard position to be in from this board, but also from the department, so we understand that. I, I also was quite verbal in, in September about you going back to your board and, and seeking flexibility and seeing where we could maybe shift some funds around. So I do really appreciate that you're coming today with a lesser amount with that. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, again, I, I want to go back. So, so the, the 320,000 that we've basically approved today to go to the HRA, and, and those are for hard fixed projects that are going on, right? And, and so is the 85,000 that you're getting from Morehead, right? So now that's $405,000. And so if you, if you had requested, and that, so along with, so, so how, if you got the 180, what wouldn't, what wouldn't you be able to get done on areas that are not qualified for the $405,000?
If we didn't get that, we would have no money to support our programs ending child homelessness in our community. Those, I think I pointed out in the packet that over this past year and starting January 1st, we have had to stop operating six separate programs and.
Where did the funding come from, from those, by the way?
They came from the Department of Human Services, they came from Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, and they came from HUD, Continuum of Care. Those were all sources of funding that did not, we were unable to sustain them because of the low funding amounts. And as, I've been doing this job since 2005, and I believe this is the first time, we have stopped operating programs, we have lowered the services that we are providing to our citizens because we cannot afford to do it. And what, and it's quite frankly heartbreaking for me because we know that the needs are there. You know, we've got staff who are going to the shelter to meet with tenants, that they're moving in and seeing, you know, tenfold more who we're not able to bring in. And so we're asking for it for that, and we're asking in order to leverage additional funds, where we have brought back $13 for every dollar that has been levied. And then we're asked, asking, as you said, there's a lot of SAHA funds, they're $405,000, and we need some staff to get the money out the door. Without the current staff person I have quitting, because we have one person doing all of our property rehabs, all of the owner occupied rehabs, and operating five separate programs on her own. And I will lose the staff that I have.
All of those things, Dar, that you talked about, that you've had to cut funding on because of a lack of funding from the state, it, it is heartbreaking. At the same point in time, I, you know, at, at, at what level is, is the county and property taxes going to have to fill that gap that's there? I, you know, there, there's responsibilities that are the states and there's the responsibilities that are the counties. And at some, and that goes to what Commissioner Moja was talking about earlier. You know, we have an awful lot of our senior citizens who are on fixed income and they're seeing these property tax increases going up to the point where it's, it's difficult for them. And, and, you know, so I, I'm trying to get a balance here. I was at our AMC conference that we just had, I attended a, a, a conference on Housing Task Force that was put on by NACO Housing Task Force. And incidentally, by the way, for the, for this county board, Olmsted County actually has their own housing director that's on staff with, with Olmsted County. It's something that when we start getting to these levels of funding, that we might have to have, start having some conversations like that on. That's, that's a topic for another day, but, but I, I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned here, you know, with, with where we're at and, 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 you know, granted, we're giving, we're including both the 2023 and the 2024 money into 2024, that's the year we're talking about now. I'm, I'm assuming we're going to be having you at this chair next year in December, having the same conversation.
I hope not the same conversation.
Well, but my guess is it'll, it'll be the same conversation, if not more. So, and I'm still, I'm still a little bit, I, I still don't understand how this whole deal with, when you took over some of this stuff with the Morehead Housing Authority, I, 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 and again, we don't, and this is another area for our commission, that for the amount of funds that are, are spent within this organization, it's the one entity that we have here that we actually do not have a layus on from the board serving on that, on your board. Or, you know, we, we send people to the Buffalo Red Board and all these other boards, and this one is a significant dollar amount, and, and, and we don't have anybody. And I, it, it might be beneficial for us to have somebody there who could come back to us and help guide us, and it's, it's pretty hard in a one-hour deal with you to understand the whole makeup of, of all of what you do. I, I, I don't know, I'm kind of, when you, when you're here and asking for the 500, I that's, that's, you know, I think that's about one, and I think that would equate to about one and a half percent levy, close to it, I think. And, and on top of everything else that we're doing, that, that I struggled with, I'm happy that it's down. I'm just, I'm just, I was just thinking it could be down a little bit more. I think, I thought that difference between the 250 and the 180 would be something that we could wiggle around and maybe make work, so I'll, I'll leave it at that.
If I may, just because it's the truth in taxation hearing coming up, I just want to point out that this is less than $10 per household that we're requesting for the county levy, that we are, as you've heard from me, one of the, we may be the largest county in the state of Minnesota, or the most populated, who does not levy for their housing agency on a regular basis. As you pointed out, a number of the counties actually pay for the staffing of the housing agencies. And so I just would like to point out for the public that this is not an unusual situation within the state of Minnesota. And also I appreciate your comment about the homeowners, but the renters of this community are also paying those property taxes, because when the owners get the statements, those increases are paid, passed on to our renters. To get a two-bedroom apartment in Morehead, you're looking at $1,000 a month or more for two bedrooms. And so I understand very much the impact that this has on folks, but it has an impact across all Clay County households. And our agency is bringing in funds to help pay those landlords those extra taxes, because we received the notices of the increases and we have seen rent increases hitting our very low, extremely low income households of $100 to $200 per month. And so I just wanted to point that out as well, that there are a number of folks who are impacted, so we do understand the, the impact of these requests.
I guess for my benefit, I would just like to know, what, are you asking for a levy increase or are you asking for a certain amount of money from?
We are asking for $250,000. We do not currently have a levy in place at all. Our agency has only levied in 2008, 2010, 2014, 2019. Our agency has only levied in 2008, 2010, 2014, 2019, and 2020. Most local units of government do levy on an annual basis.
You're asking for $250,000 tonight?
Correct. In property levy for a special taxing district, which I believe was included on the statements that went out. I believe that was at the $500,000 level.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I am going to make a motion to approve the Clay County HRA to levy and collect a special benefit tax of $250,000 for 2024, which is a decrease from the 500,000 that was initially or preliminarily approved in September.
General Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair. Dar, I want to go to the resolution that your board passed on June 20th of 2023, and I'm going to go to, there were five bullet points, and I'm going to go to bullet point number four. And it talks about different things and about what your plans are. And it brought my attention to, I'll just read item. Ford says, "This special levy will be used for costs associated with administering and performing rehabilitation work on homes occupied low and moderate income, or moderate income owners located in Clay County." I'd like to know what moderate means, but.
That's up to 80% of area median income is what, that is our maximum that we look at.
Okay. And then in Minnesota, administering rental assistance, including the homework starts with home program, which we all think is great, and subsidizing housing developments in Clay County, and developing new affordable housing opportunities within Clay County. That's an interesting one. I'm, I'd like to, probably not for tonight, but at some point in time, know more about what that is because that is the, you know.
Just so that you know, we would like to know more about what that is as well. That is, that was the amounts put in to leverage the additional state resources that are coming out that have not been offered out for competition as of yet. So there are things like down payment assistance, rehabilitating naturally occurring affordable housing within the community, doing other incentives for homeownership. So I do not have specifics as of yet because that is what that statement is to entail.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve a request of $250,000. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, passes.
Mr. Chair, just to Commissioner Campbell's comments, Ms. Lee and I have talked, starting next, next spring and fall, we are going to have a meeting where both Commissions will get together to learn more about the services that they provide.
And just to elaborate on that, if you all are comfortable with it, I have asked the new Director of Government Affairs for Minnesota Housing and Finance Agency if she would be willing to come and speak at that joint meeting, and she was very happy to do so. And so hopefully she will have more specifics on some of those questions as well, directly from the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Dar. Okay.
Mr. Chair, we do have one item at 6:30. I believe Justin is here, if we can handle that now.
We've got a little, about five minutes here. Request approval of Resolution 23, 2023-34, Department of Natural Resources Funding.
Yes, good morning. So this is the annual resolution that allows us to get money back for the maintenance that we do on the Art Trail, which runs from Ewan North to the North County Line. It's five miles. So all this resolution does is just when we're mowing or doing any sort of repairs, we just get reimbursed from the state for it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-34.
Second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, and pass the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Just going to see if there's any more discussion, but I guess not. We approve the motion. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to make this official. Do we adjourn for a while, table?
We don't, we don't adjourn, Mr. Chair. We would just take a five-minute break.
Okay. In the meantime, if there's a sign-in sheet. Tax levy highlights for budget for next year. Steve, you want to start it out?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. On behalf of the Clay County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to welcome those attending the Truth in Taxation meeting, both in person and watching online. There are budget packets that were available at the door for citizens that, if they're wanting to walk through, walk through the packet with us. Also, if you plan to speak tonight, we would ask that you sign in first and last name and also the city or township of your residence of record. I'd like to start each Truth in Taxation, just as a reminder that tonight is about providing comment for the proposed 2024 budget. If there are issues that you're having with your property valuations or your tax, unfortunately, that time, the time to address those concerns was during the Board of Appeals and Equalization back in April through June. This evening, we're holding public comment for the proposed 2024 budget as a whole. Jill Murray, our county assessor, is here this evening. And for those of you that have questions about your property valuations or tax, she would be happy to meet with you across the hallway and answer any of those questions or set up a time to talk with you in the future. Having said that, all citizens that are here are certainly welcome to stay for the Truth in Taxation, or you can head over now to meet with Jill across the hall.
So what are you saying, if you're here for the purpose of your taxes, talking about your taxes?
Valuation.
Valuations. Jill will be across the hall in the other room over there. You can go over there and talk to her. Okay, very good.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. As you're aware, this budget process, this budget process started back in May when our department heads began preparing and presenting their proposed budgets initially to the county administrator and county auditor, and then ultimately to this board. The board provided guidance and direction at the beginning of this process and throughout the process, and numerous adjustments have been made over several months, culminating to the September 17th Resolution 2023-19, approving the preliminary 2024 budget at 3.89%, allowing the county auditor, Ms. Johnson, to comply with state statute. At Truth in Taxation this evening, I will be presenting the proposed 2024 budget information packet based on that certified preliminary budget. Commissioners, I will take a pause from time to time to allow you to ask questions, but if you have immediate questions or comments, please feel free to jump in. At the end of the presentation, we'll also allow for a time for our public to also present comments. And with that, before I jump in, are there any questions?
Go for it.
All right. The first document that is a part of your packet is something that's very familiar. You've seen this levy by funds multiple times throughout our process. Again, it identifies the five main revenue funds for our tax levy. The tax levy proposed at the top there in blue is $47,917,269. Through the budget process, the departments have requested, new requests of $721,082. And through the process of our discussion, this board has requested the ability to utilize $500,000 to pay down the levy with fund balance, which brings us to a total levy of 48,138,351. The 2023 legislature provided $80 million, $80 million additional dollars of county program aid, which translated into roughly $1.4 million of additional funding for a total of $5,536,651, providing a spread levy of $42,601,700, or 5.09% increase. As you can see, there's new construction growth of 1.2%, bringing our net levy increase down to 3.89%. We will go into some additional detail in later, later in the presentation on some of these figures, but I just wanted to provide a reminder of what we covered. The second item is the area of that I'm sure many of the citizens here and watching are concerned with, and that's the amount that we'll be asking our citizens for payment in 2024. The tax levy is broken down into five different categories, as we've talked about, and that tax levy request next year is $42,601,700. General Reserve Revenue Fund is $25,687,415, or 60.3% of the budget. Social Services, $12,058,054, or 28.3% of the levy. Road and Bridge is $4,284,395, or 10.06%. Debt Retirement is $527,651, or 1.24%. And Building Improvement Fund of $44,185, or .10%. Through the tax collection process, Ms. Johnson allocates the tax dollars to the appropriate fund balances, fund, department funds, and again, we'll touch on those in greater detail. Are there any questions in regards to the levy amount? All right, the next slide, we'll take a look at our expenditures. As you can see, our expenditures for 2024 are $113,466,567. Again, our fixed costs are a good portion of that. Our employees are our most valuable resource, are a significant portion of each of these different funds. When we look at the general fund, our expenses are broken down into $35,283,917, or 31%, 31.1% of the expenses. Social Services is $27,317,169, or 24.08%. Road and Bridge is $16,582,826, or 14.61%. Public Health is $10,396,484, or 9.16%. Juvenile Detention, Secure and Non-Secure, are $8,146,350, or 7.18%. Solid Waste is $5,843,425, or 5.15%. Debt Retirement is $4,451,850, or 3.92%. Internal Service is $3,266,153, or 2.88%. The Family Service Center is $2,028,339, or 1.79%. Major Improvements to our Buildings is $100,000, or 0.09%. And Building Improvements of $50,000, or 0.04%. These, of course, these two items have become more important as our campuses expand. It's important to note that the Solid Waste, Family Service Center, and the Juvenile Detention Center portion are considered enterprise fund programs, and they are considered self-supporting in the fees that they're charging for their services. But, and while they're included in expenses, their budgets are not taken into consideration when establishing the annual levy. As you can certainly see, there is a difference between our total expenditures and the revenues collected. For the information for our citizens, they need to be aware that in our county, we act as a pass-through for both the state and the federal government, kind of an additional arm, where we're required to provide, we're required through mandates to provide certain services, which the state and federal government provide funding to carry out those funds, or those services, and they make up the difference between our revenues and our expenses. Does anyone have any questions with our expenditures for 2024? Just to give a little bit of a history of where we are at, as you can see, going back the last nine budget cycles, the proposed levy that we spoke about earlier is 5.09%. When we look over the last nine years, we have a range from 4.77 in 2021 to the higher end of 7.09 in 2020. For your recollection, if you recall back in 2020, that was the year that we implemented a market study. And so if you take that 2020 out as kind of an anomaly, our average percentage over that timeframe is 5.38%. And so I think it's important for our citizens to understand that the spread levy percentages listed are prior to taking into consideration new construction growth, as mentioned earlier. Clay County has been fortunate to experience new construction growth between 1.15 and 1.25% over the last number of budget cycles, with this year's percentage again being at the 1.2%. In addition, the Clay County Board of Commissioners may also look to utilize one-time reserve funds to offset the levy. While careful consideration needs to go into this decision, these funds may become available due to higher-than-expected revenues, lower-than-anticipated expenses, or a combination of both. This year, the board has made the recommendation to utilize $500,000 of fund balance. In addition to the 1.2% increase in new construction, again, this proposed net levy increase would be 3.89%. Lastly, an important note of recognition for our citizens is the consistency that the Clay County boards have taken in their approach to levy increases. In being consistent in setting levies, we do not see spikes that can both have short and long-term consequences for our citizens. This goes to the foresight of being good stewards of your tax dollars. At the end of this presentation, I plan to present a document from the Minnesota Department, Minnesota State Auditor, that captures the outcomes and benefits of the consistencies in setting levies. Any questions on the history of the levy? All right. The next slide would be the history, Clay County budget history revenue, just kind of taking a look at the last five budget cycles. Again, if we take a look from a revenue standpoint, there are, the main revenue sources are the taxes, license and permits, intergovernmental revenue, charges for service, fines and forfeitures, interest on investment, miscellaneous, and transfers in. And again, the revenues that we're anticipating for 2020, or 2024 in Clay County are $110,001,119. When we take a look at our expenditures, again, Clay County, let's see, the expenses for next year are anticipated at $113,466,567. Again, if you take a peek at those two different items, obviously, there's a difference in the revenues collected and the expenditures that the county is putting out. I want to assure that the citizens, that the county is not operating in deficit. Rather, Clay County departments utilize internal service when saving for larger purchases or projects. These dollars are going to be spent and recognized financially in a specific year, but have been budgeted throughout multiple years. Utilizing internal services is another way that Clay County is able to minimize spikes in the levy. And again, I would just also note that within the total expenses, the enterprise funds that we mentioned earlier, the Family Service Center, Public Health, and the Juvenile Center are also in, are included in there while they do not count against the levy. Just to give you guys a little bit of better idea of specifics to the changes of expenditures from '23 to '24, I do have a document here that you guys will recognize. We've talked about this multiple times throughout this process, but just wanted to provide a little bit more detail into a few of these different areas. Again, I'm going to touch on the areas that are highlighted on there if there are additional questions that you have. If there are additional questions that you have on areas that are not highlighted, feel free to ask those questions. But I'm just going to give a little insight into some of the ones that are, some of the items that are ten percent or higher. The Clay County Public Defender's Office, as you recall, last year, we, we had to re-advertise for a position. We ended up paying a little bit of a higher salary, or in that position, or a rate, I should say, and so we saw a twenty percent increase from where we were last year. The County Administrators are, increase in my budget is all salary-related, between the Administrator, Communications Coordinator, and Administrative Assistant. Motor Vehicle, I think one of the areas that this Board has been very adamant about is making sure that we provide excellent service in a timely manner at our Motor Vehicle Department, and we have additional staff that have been included in this area, along with their, their COLAs and STEPs for thirteen point eight two percent. Elections take place every two years, but Ms. Johnson say utilizes the budget on all of the off-years with a small increase each year to make sure that we have sufficient funds to, to conduct fair elections. The next item is the County Attorney's Victim Witness. These are added, there is added positions in each of these areas. We had been funding those positions, a couple of those positions through ARPA, and, and they showed up this first time here on, on this budget. The other item is, is that you did approve some funding or positions that are utilizing public safety money, and so while there is an expense in this line item, there's also a revenue that shows up within this budget to cover the costs for twenty twenty-four. Grounds and, and Buildings, as we, as we mentioned, as our, our facility spread into different locations, an increase, we need to have additional maintenance custodial staff, and that has been addressed in this budget. Joe continues to, our Facilities Director continues to reallocate funding for each building to get a better exact cost of what it costs to operate each of our facilities, and so that is an adjustment there. The Sheriff's Department, we had a, a, two new deputies positions that were added for twenty twenty-four. Again, this is one of the areas where it shows up as an expense, but is being covered by, in twenty twenty-four, by public safety revenues. And so the Juvenile Center, this, this is a secure portion. We've seen an increase due to, due to the, the needs that were in there. The Juvenile Center, as, and their, and their membership have a two-year lookback, and the two, two-year lookback showed that there is an increased demand for services for Clay County youth, and subsequently, that's where the increase is. The Red River Basin is just a minor adjustment. Last year, it was twelve hundred and eighty, twelve hundred and eighty-one dollars. This year, it's sixteen hundred and one dollars, so that twenty-four percent isn't as, isn't as large of an issue as, as it may appear. Soil and Water Conservation, there's, simply it shows as a decrease of, of seventeen point four seven percent. That's simply the grant that utilized, used to run through the county, now goes directly to the soil and water, and so it's no longer shown there. The Metro Council, that, that budget's broken down into two areas. Operations and Overhead, Clay County is, is responsible to six point one percent of that, and also contracted planning services. Each year, there, there, we're, we're required, or there's an allotment for number one of the operations and overhead, and from time to time, there are contracted planning services that vary from year to year. This year, the Metro Cog has a, a number of different things, and I'll just mention a few. They're going to be working on the five-year updated, update to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. We're also wrapping up the DGF Safe Streets for All. There's going to be a study on the alignment of the Heartland Trail, and also an electric vehicle readiness study that will be completed in twenty twenty-four, and subsequently, that's where that increase has come. The next item is the Greater Fargo-Moore EDC and Abatement Program. The amount that we're paying for the Greater Fargo-Moore EDC remains the same. The, the difference that we have here is the number of people or families that are participating in the abatement program. The Clay County Fair sees, has seen a decrease. Again, that's not a decrease of funding that you're providing for the fair. If you recall, last year, we provided an additional ten thousand dollars of our budget to provide for a, or a new shower bathroom services at the fairgrounds, and so that's not there this year. Our Unallocated General, we have an increase. We had increased the MCT costs. We had planned increases for our, our medical insurance, and we also have, again, this year, our funding for future insurance increases when our, when our, I guess, allotment of, of the percentage, the locked-in percentage for our, our medical insurance is gone. We also, the West Central Initiative, had a request this year for an adjustment. Again, that went from fourteen thousand to, to eighteen thousand. With that, then the next slide addresses Road and Bridge. We, we had a five, ten point nine eight percent increase. Again, that is fluent from the standpoint of that, that budget coordinates with the five-year plan that Mr. Soren puts together each year. Clay County receives, receives state and fund, state and federal dollars to clean, complete a majority of those projects. And then there's also an adjustment for the uncertainty of gas prices. Public Health, we saw an increase of the sixteen point eight three percent. Part of that is transitioning away over, there were COVID funding, although we've kind of transitioned from that. There was funding for COVID through Public Health that went into twenty-two, and we're starting to see a, a decrease or elimination of those funds. There are also new positions added to that, and again, an example that this Board's approved with, as an expense here, but revenues to, to offset the cost of some of those new positions. The next item is, is Solid Waste, identifying the increase there. Again, some of those come with the operation of the new Resource Recovery Center, or, excuse me, Resource Recovery Facility and operational costs. The major adjustment that you'll see is composting. If you recall, we've had discussions in the past year and a half where the cost of composting became very expensive. In fact, there's a period of time where it looked like we were not going to be able to provide that throughout the county. We've had discussions at the, at the, this Board about the increase of SCORE funding. We received about thirty thousand dollars in SCORE funding, additional SCORE dollars, and those SCORE dollars are going to be added to that composting. So while we're seeing an increase, again, it's a revenue that's paying for, for that program. Family Service Center, Central Services, again, continuing to reorganize salary splits between the different departments and different positions, and so we saw some adjustments. And again, the last one to identify, it's not highlighted, but the Internal Service Fund, as I spoke about earlier, this Board has had our departments pre-plan for larger expenses and projects, and with the, with the changes of supply issues that we've had, we've seen a number of increases from, from vehicles to BOMGS, to all different things where we need to, may, need to adjust also when it comes time to purchase, we have the adequate funding. And so that, is there any questions that anybody else had in regards to some of the expenses per county? All right, the next, the next slide is a document that shows the impact of the, this proposed levy if the values of the property stayed flat. These examples are based off the City of Moorhead property, but Ms. Johnson and her staff have the ability to provide information for any city or township. This document provides examples of home prices of a hundred and fifty thousand market value, two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty, and four hundred and fifteen thousand. The information ends with four hundred and fifteen thousand because that is where the market value credit ends. Tonight, for our discussion purposes, we are going to look at the breakdown of, of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar market value Homestead property in the City of Moorhead. Based on, on this proposed, proposed levy request, Clay County would see a decrease of nine point six six percent in the event that property stayed flat, which would recall, which would allow for a hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-one savings for, for Clay County residents. The School, the City of Moorhead, would see a decrease of six point three percent, which would translate to a forty-two point, excuse me, forty-two dollar and ninety-nine cent decrease.
Just maybe want to correct, it's three point six percent.
Sorry, three, oh, three point six percent. And the, when it comes to city or township, city of Moorhead Township, there was an increase of four point one eight percent, or forty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cent increase. The EDA, that, the Moorhead EDA has an increase of eighteen point one five, one, eighteen dollars and fifteen cents, or an increase of fifty-two point two three percent. And the watershed remained relatively flat at, at a decrease of nine cents, or a point two one percent decrease. So overall, for the, for a resident in the City of Moorhead, who had a property, a home market value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, assuming no change in value from the previous year, would pay a decrease of eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents per year, or a two point five two percent decrease. If you take a look at the document that you have, it also has the same breakdowns for the hundred and fifty, the two hundred, and the four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar market, market value. Does anybody have any questions? All right, the next, the next area that we want to talk about is estimated market values. We're looking at the last twenty assessments. Our focus will be on the, on this slide is the estimated market value. It's comprised of tillable land, residential land and buildings, and commercial land and buildings. This, the, the document in front of you focuses on the tillable land and the residential. In twenty twenty-three, the estimated market value for all land in Clay County is nine billion, three hundred and sixty-two million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. This is a market value increase from twenty twenty-two of eight billion, thirty, thirty, eight billion, thirty million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, and two hundred and fifty dollars. The breakdown for tillable land is, is two billion, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, excuse me, two billion, nine hundred and twenty-eight million, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred dollars, or thirty-one point three percent of the total estimated market value. Residential and land buildings are four billion, six hundred and eighty-three million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred, or fifty percent. So the total estimated market value of the two categories are eighty, eighty-one point three percent. The remaining eighteen point seven percent is commercial property. Twenty twenty-three, we've continued to see increase price per acre in land auction sales, which has increased the, the estimated market value of tillable land from thirty-one point three. This, this year, about a five point one percent increase over twenty twenty-two. If not, at the beginning of this presentation, I, I shared that I would provide some information that, that shows that the fiscal responsibility and the, the goal that this Board has in providing a levy which is consistent with limited impact, all while providing the services that our citizens have come to expect. Again, this message is passed on from the beginning of our budget process, through the evaluations, and also not only just in evaluations as they come before this Board, but throughout our management team as we meet for the roughly six months till we get to this process this evening. I, I share this document each year as I, and through this presentation because I believe this document supports the Board of Commissioners' consistent approach and the expectation of our departments to bring forward a budget that meets the citizens, meets the needs of our citizens in the most cost-effective means possible by comparing a series of areas of other Minnesota counties in Minnesota per capita. So when we take a look, the first highlighted area is taxes, and while certainly this Board does not underestimate the responsibility of adjusting taxes in Minnesota out of the eighty-five counties that reported in twenty twenty-one, which is the most updated information the Department of Revenue provides, Clay County was the seventy-eighth lowest of the eighty-five counties. For charges for service, a recorder office, planning and zoning, et cetera, which many people feel is an additional, could be considered an additional tax, Clay County requests of its citizens the lowest amount of charges for services in the state. And the final item that I have highlighted there is total current expenditures as a county per capita. Clay County is, again, on the low end of the seventy-ninth out of the eighty-five counties that have reported. While Clay County remains one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Minnesota, and no citizens like to see a levy increase, this Commission continues to strive to be excellent stewards of the public fund, and this document supports the comments made this evening. And with that, I would yield for any questions.
Thank you for the report, and I guess with all the information you've given us, you know, you look at our tax levy, how consistent it's been the last few years, and we've built a jail, a law enforcement center, got a government, we build, bought a government center, a storage facility, we have solid waste facility, we were doing a detox center, and our motor vehicle center. I think we're doing pretty good, as you showed in the last slide, that we're pretty close, like seventy-ninth out of eighty-five, so I think we're doing real good. Okay, any other comments? Comments, you want to take comments from the audience now, or do you have more stuff
Again, for those interested, if you want to come up, if you please, if you'd sign in, first, last name, your, your address, and once you've done that, if, if you wish to speak, to come and identify yourself again, first, last name, and, and where you live.
Greg Zolmer from Yulin. How many times do you go out and drive around on country roads?
Quite a bit.
Yeah?
Yes.
In pretty good shape, do you think?
I think, I think we keep them in pretty good shape. I, I work with Justin Soren, County Engineer, and I've gone several trips with him already, and I myself drive around too.
When I was growing up, the road grader went by once a week. Now we're lucky to see him once a month, driving on radial tires, driving fast, bounce, there's many washboards when he gets done, as before he started. It's not the operator's fault, it's the boss's fault. Snowplow would go by within twelve hours, probably, if the wind quit blowing. We've waited over three days, many times, in the last couple of years. So your services aren't keeping up in the country, but your taxes certainly are. Whether it's valuation or increases in levy, it doesn't matter. Hundred and thirty-three percent increase. Hundred and forty-eight percent increase. Seventy-five percent increase. Two hundred and twelve point four percent increase. Maybe Administrator can help us budget for that. You guys got new buildings everywhere you look, every vehicle on the road's less than five years old. You know, stop spending some money, give us guys a break. Anything you want to ask me, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I don't want to get into any argument, but services on the road, I think, I think we try and keep up, and our county engineers here too, and, you know, once a month, I have a tough time believing that one, but.
County Engineer probably knows me pretty good, we visit quite often, but doesn't seem to make any difference. Township roads are down to about one lane. When I was growing up, forty, fifty years ago, you could meet somebody on Township Road and not have to worry about losing your mirrors. They make one pass instead of two, so it's not very wide.
You said you live in Yulin Township, right?
Eagan Township, Yulin address.
Okay, okay, excuse me.
Yep.
The townships haven't complained to us concerning, have you talked to your townships?
Sure, they complain every time there's a meeting. You guys had some guys out, I remember if it was this year or the year before, and everybody expressed the same concerns. What do you want them to do? Yulin, I think, quit hiring you. I think they have their own now, but that's a pretty tall order. I think they have their own now, but that's a pretty tall order for a township to fill.
Okay. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chair, I just have a clarification. You, you named off several different percentages of increase, and I just wanted, were you, is that on this sheet or your property?
No, I'll take a look at them here, I'll give them to you.
What's the, the property? Thank you. Did you talk to the woman across the road? Oh, you did, okay. Okay. All right. Okay. That's, I'll call you.
Anybody else, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that those are the, the property valuation increases, and so I, I wanted to make sure he was talking to the.
Talk to Tina over the other side there. Talk to Tina over the other room.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just, I want to comment on, uh, when it comes to the buildings, and going back to what Commissioner Gross had talked about, you know, over the last several years, we've had multiple new buildings go up. We did a new correctional facility and law enforcement center that was paid for with a sales tax that was passed by 80%, with an 80% positive vote from the county, of county citizens. We had a, uh, the other buildings that we've had, uh, we decided to use a lot of our ARPA money and CARES money. And if you're not familiar with those are, those are federal dollars that came into the state and into the counties to use for purposes, and this all pretty much happened after COVID. And so, for example, when we built the, um, uh, the new, well, we're building the new, um, uh, detox facility, it's substance abuse and substance use facility, that was a significant project. We got a seven and a half million dollar grant from the state of Minnesota to build that, and then we also used ARPA money to build that. There was no tax, no property tax dollars used for that construction period. So, so none of that was done with, with local tax dollars. The, uh, the same can be said with the new facility that we have for our, um, transfer station. That, that was actually a $23 million project. And of that, there were, there were no local property tax dollars needed to fund that project. You know, I think we can, we can go on, the new government center that now houses a lot of our areas on, is it 12th Avenue South or 15th? 12th Avenue South was all done with dollars that were granted to us from the federal and state. You know, and the reason, and we could have used those dollars for something else, but we chose though, to do, do it for those purposes, so that we would not have to have property taxes raised for those issues. There, there are some counties that elected to use those dollars in different ways than Clay County did. But, but we decided to use it for infrastructure that's going to have 50 to 60 to 70, 70 years worth of benefits to the county. Uh, in regards to the vehicles and the new vehicles that you see, uh, we actually had just recently gone, in the last two or three, four years, we have gone away from buying vehicles to leasing vehicles, and, and that, in doing so, we have saved an awful lot of taxpayer dollars in doing that. So, so you, you know, you might be seeing new vehicles around, but when, you know, after three years, we can turn those vehicles in at, uh, much cheaper than had we had to buy those, and then turn around after X number of years and, and just get salvage value out of them.
So if we're saving so much money, how come my taxes are doubling?
Well, and again, this, this goes to, you know, I'll, I'll try to explain that to you.
You're going to say valuation.
Yes, yeah, part, part of it goes to valuation. So, so the presentation that, that our administrator gave on a $250,000 house, it said, well, if your, if your, if your house stayed at $250,000 from 2023 to 2024, you wouldn't see a tax increase. Unfortunately, some areas of the county are seeing higher values brought in, and if you notice, just in ag, for those of you who are here ag people, you'll notice that you had a 6%, there was actually a 6% increase in valuation of, of ag property. And it's not that we want to do it, it's that we're required to do it based on what the state law says that you have to do based on comparable sales. And if you're, if you've got ag land that used to sell for 3,000 and is selling for 9,000 now, there's going to be a shift. And it, and we don't like the shifts from, by the way, from residential to, to ag either. So, so.
But do you do anything about them?
Well, we try. When, when it comes to the ag stuff, we've, we've brought in, at the time, it was Representative Markort and Ekin, we brought all those people in to help work with St. Paul, to, to help understand that, that our producers can't afford these, these, these big shifts. And so there was some, and I'm not, I'm not the best person to talk about state, what they did at the state level, but I know there was some, some things, and Commissioner Mosel might know a little bit more about that with her background, but there, there were some limitations on what ag land could.
School levies weren't included anymore, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, so anyway, but it, it does, well, there's, there's one thing you're right about. In the, in the, if you're, if you're not talking, well, you could be right about more things, but, but the one, the one area that, that I will agree with you on is that if we spend more money, somebody's got to pay for it. And, and that, and again, that's kind of what we, we certainly try to watch for, I certainly do, I, uh, in, in terms of wanting to keep your taxes as low as possible. But when you look at, you know, at 3.89, um, you know, if you were to sit and, and listen to the dialogue that we have on an annual basis, when we have all of our staff come in here and they talk about their people, and, and you even mentioned it, you know, service is important, and you, but you should get what you pay for, right? So, but our services are important, and, and 80% of everything that you pay for is for, is for personnel. 80% of what you pay for is personnel, maybe even more than 80%. And, and with that, we're in a market condition that we've never seen before, in terms of competitiveness, and, and we want to be able to keep our people. And so we have, we have to make sure that we're keeping up, you know, with an inflationary standpoint for, for, you know, so when you look at an overall increase of 3.5%, I find that to be reasonable when you take into consideration what's going on. We could, we couldn't even hire deputies, we couldn't even hire highway people, we, truck drivers, we couldn't, couldn't hire them.
I know.
Because, because of the situ, and so we, so in order to do that, we have to, we have to stay up with the market.
I actually volunteered to, uh, run road grader for your county engineer here, just to do the roads from my place to the highways, to take some time, but that didn't go very far. I was willing to do it for nothing. I'm sure I could run it, I've run a lot of machines. There's a lot of guys that could do it.
Okay, anyway, that's, that's kind of, like, just kind of wanted to make some of the explanations, and, you know, as Steve was going through this whole deal, and, and these, and they'd asked us if we had questions, one of the reasons we don't have questions is we, because we do see this constantly and work on this all year long. And so when you sit there and, as an audience, you say, well, why aren't those commissioners asking any questions? We have questions, a lot of them, and, but they've, they've been answered during the course of this process.
I, I guess my comment would be also, when we show what our county's rated at, 79 out of 85. I mean, I hate to see what some of the other shooting taxation meetings are in the other counties that are lower.
Clay County has its own issues with Morehead and Delworth being so big and, and unruly probably in certain aspects compared to a Norman Colony maybe, or.
Yeah.
But, um, when I go to the DMV, I go to Ada because I'm in and out, so.
I, I just want to comment quickly. One, I appreciate that you're all here, I think it's really important for us to hear your feedback. Certainly, we always say that we can't advocate for issues that we're not hearing about, so thanks for coming. Two, I live in the country, and I know exactly what you're saying. I've also had issues where I've needed to call the sheriff's office, and it has taken longer than we wish it to take because of certain issues, and part of the large increases that you're seeing in the budget this year is we're taking a large step forward in making sure there are more deputies on the road in Clay County so that they can react and respond faster. The sheriff has been really adamant about that. And then the dispatch services, that's a problem. I mean, and, and even if you saw on our budget, or our meeting that started at 5:00, we talked a lot about making sure that we're increasing the dispatch capacity so that when your call comes up, or comes in, uh, we have the staff there ready to respond to those emergency services. And then the only other piece is, I, I've also, I know what you're saying about plows taking longer. Uh, I know that there are buses that have picked up kiddos that have taken snowmobiles to the bus stop in rural Clay County, and that's not okay. Um, it's something that our new county engineer has really been adamant about working with the school districts, making sure we know where the routes are so that we can get a plow to those families as soon as possible. Um, all of your comments are very valid, and we hear it, and, and unfortunately, unfortunately, it is that delicate balance. Do we, um, do we increase the taxes at an exorbitant rate to address all of these issues, which I know none of us want, but we did, um, you will see a large increase in the highway budget because we are fixing issues like County 26, which, um, I, you, you'll lose your dentures if you're driving down that road, it's awful, somebody's going to get hurt if we don't fix it, and those take lots of millions of dollars to do per mile, so I'm, I'm not negating your, your comments or questions, they're certainly valid.
I can give you three other things then, too. I have to vote by mail, I can't go to my town hall and vote anymore.
That is.
That is a problem.
That, that is, that is absolutely go to the township officials. I mean, that is something that the townships have voted, and they're elected locally, they voted to do that.
Because they can't afford the $20,000 machine, they have it out there. Because they got to have a new machine. We got 80 votes, you could count them by hand in five minutes, but you got to have a $20,000 machine.
But we all watch the news, and we know what happens if people vote by, by hand. So, I mean, in terms of election transparency, that's why.
I had a, my wife had a heart issue, we thought, a few years ago, called dispatch, and they said, give me directions from the nearest town. I said, three north, five west to Yulin. They sent the ambulance from Morehead through Yulin to get to my place, because they couldn't find it on a map with the address. They had to follow my address, it's about 18 miles farther. Luckily, it wasn't a big deal. Another instance, I had somebody pass me on Highway 10, going the wrong way on Highway 10, called the dispatch. By the time I finally figured out what was going on, I was talking to somebody in Bismarck. So obviously, that guy never got any attention, so, anyway. Couple other things for you to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, just a note to that discussion, the average, the average preliminary levy in the state of Minnesota is 6% this year.
Okay.
My name's Greg Gromish, I'm from Barnesville, Minnesota, and I realize Jenny's got, lives in the country just like I do, and I appreciate the sheriff, I need, I think we need to have representation about that. But, you know, I see a lot of your, on your screens that you're going up 5% or 3% or even 24% for some of these issues, but, you know, my taxes are going up 114, 64, 62, and 83%. So I'm paying way more taxes than, I, I realize that it's valuation, but it, it makes no sense that, why should I pay? I, I don't go down to the elevator and say, oh, I'm a farmer, so I need to get another $6,500 for my taxes for 2024. How am I going to do that? But you guys can just go ahead and raise the taxes because you got a mandate from the state of Minnesota, or you got a levy, and I understand your levy, but what are you going to do with the extra money? Are you going to all spent already? You already got to figure it out all, what you're going to do with it? Is that, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
You don't have any extra?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, within, within this budget, the only, the only dollar amount that we spend are internal services that I spoke about, uh, for future projects, and we're also, we have 200,000, 250,000, set aside, 250 set aside for insurance. Otherwise, the amount of that levy is for, for, um, for services that we plan to provide in 2024. Now, one of the things that this board has done on a very consistent basis, in the event that, uh, that we do ask more, uh, from our citizens than we need, they have made that adjustment, uh, the following year, and used, utilized, uh, those dollars to pay down the levy.
So you're not going to have extra dollars next year for a levy because you had 500,000 from previous year?
Last year, um, yeah, I want to make sure I get this right here, I just have to grab a sheet of paper. Last year, uh, as we shared with the board, uh, in, in 2022, Clay County had a, a, in their general fund, had a deficit of $2,059,251. Um, and so they're utilizing, this 500,000 that they're utilizing, uh, we didn't, we didn't have any fund balance this past, in 2022, we also did not have a fund balance in 2021, uh, yet the board utilized, um, 1.5 million dollars, uh, of the, of the general fund and social service fund to offset the levy. So, um, they take, they, we, we have a lot of discussions as far as the importance of, um, advocating and saying, if we're asking for this, these dollars every year and we're not spending it, we, we need to look and make that adjustment, uh, whenever possible.
Just, I had a clarification based on the numbers, were those all the county, that's the, your county tax has seen 100 and, 100% or is that includes school district as well?
Well, there is school district in here, but it's not, it went from $1,500 to $3,300, that, the, the school district didn't take that much money. They went from $98, the school district, to 213, and then, uh, voter approved from $142, $142 to $267. It's not that big a deal compared to what Clay County's getting. I mean, the valuation is, is ridiculous. I mean, I mean, I, I would like to retire someday, and my land, I have to rent it to another farmer, an upcoming farmer, and I'm going to have to charge him more for, because of the taxes, and I don't get the money, and he doesn't get the money, but Clay County's going to get the money. So I, what am I going to do? I got to say, well, I'm, I got to take less for land rent to, because he can't go to the elevator and ask them for more money.
And that is.
Markets, they go up and down.
Completely valid. I mean, those are completely, the, the problem is, and, and we're tiptoeing into that June meeting that we talked about, but.
That's correct.
I think it's important to, to say.
Yes.
When there is land selling for over $9,000 an acre, unfortunately, when, when you have market that's doing that, and we're just talking ag, and I get that, and there's ag credit, or, you know, there's all those.
There is.
Pieces that we talk about in St. Paul, but that's what's tricky, because we are mandated by the state to set that value, and, and actually, last year, we did petition, our assessor's office petitioned, to allow us to accept a lower value because it was such an exorbitant swing. And I, I'm paying the ag piece too, so I, I am in the same boat as you, so I completely understand that you can't make a tax payment on land rent. It doesn't makes, it doesn't pencil out, and that is not awesome.
You know, it's, it's, the, the idea is that the taxes that I pay, um, last year compared to next year is so exorbitant, it's like $6,500 more in taxes, and I just don't, just don't feel that, that all that money is being, is accounted for. I think maybe the state let you charge more for taxes, and then what are you going to do with the extra money? I mean, are you actually going to save some of it if you can?
Well, we're, we actually, and I'm not going to interrupt the administrator here, but we actually have had those conversations about making sure that revenues over expenditures are applied back that next year, because it, it only makes sense if you're overtaxing and bringing in more revenue to, to make sure and bring that down. Now, the part of the problem is, the state mandates a lot, and, and you can, you can watch the news in St. Paul about a lot of that, and so this last legislation was, I mean, it was tricky for us to try to figure out how to pay for all that. Now, this board has been very dedicated to make sure that we're doing that, um, that we're buying down, and then you have the state auditors with different recommendations on. And then you have the state auditors with different recommendations on, on what those amounts should be. I mean, we, but I get it. I completely hear you.
If I, if I, if I can just, so you, you know, you talk about the, you know, your high increases that you have there on your valuations. And, and if you, if you go back and you look, there, and unfortunately, this is the tax shift that I was talking about earlier. You have an increase, but there's also an awful lot of people who had a decrease. And so, so when it, when it comes to what we spend, you're picking up a bigger portion based on that tax shift. It's not like we're, we're, you know, we're spending that gobs more money than, than, you know, where you went from, what'd you say the counties went, it's 6,000 increase or something?
I'm paying 6,000, $6,500 more. I paid $13,000 last year, and this year, I'm going to pay, 2024, it'll be 20,000 some odd dollars.
And that's in county tax, county property tax.
Clay County.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, and again, there's, there's, there's multiple stools on the tax.
Yes, there is.
Right?
Yes.
There's the county.
No kidding, there's other.
So that's with no, no building improvements.
So what I'm asking, so is, is the 6,000 that you're talking about, is that strictly the county's portion of increase?
No.
Okay.
It's part of the school system also.
Okay. It's, it's all, yeah.
But we, we all agreed.
Yeah.
That the school system can have some extra money. But we didn't agree that, that the state mandate's going to be, oh, you guys got to charge this much. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, and I, and I agree with you, but, but, but part of what, what I'm saying is, is in that increase that you got. It's unfortunate for you, but, but based on the current records that go on and the current transactions that have gone on throughout the year, it indicates that your val, your valuations are higher. And if somebody else, look, if, if, and I, I bring this up at every time we have these, these meetings. If everybody in the county, their property went up exactly the same, and the county didn't spend any more money, your taxes wouldn't go up. Right? Your taxes wouldn't go up. So, so if, if everybody's valuation went up the same, and the county didn't spend any more money, you wouldn't see that $6,000 increase.
Right.
But be, you know, there, unfortunately, there's a tax shift that, that goes on that, that's part of the reason for that.
Right.
And part of the reason, can, we can't speak for school districts, and we can't speak for townships.
I'm not here to ask.
Yeah. You know, on, on, on what their portion of an increase is, but.
I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that the extra money that the state mandated that you're getting, is that really money that you need to spend? I mean, are you going to spend it all? I mean, I'm going to.
I guess.
I'm just a little guy in Clay County, dying.
Your question, it goes, it goes back to your comment earlier. The, the pot is, the pot isn't increasing, the valuation is shifting.
Yeah, the valuation. Even though they're, even though I'm paying more evaluation, what, I don't understand why, I, I get that that's where you're getting your money, is the valuation. But is the valuation really the extra money that you're going to need? Is that the money that you're going to spend on everything that you need to have? And then all of a sudden, it's 114% and 64%? When all these numbers on the board were only up to 24%.
But, but again.
8%.
And again, what, you know, I don't want to repeat myself to me. So the, for example, the $6,000 increase that you have in property tax, in your increase from 13,000 or 7,000, let's round it to 7,000.
Okay.
So, so you're paying $7,000 more. But in all likelihood, there's other areas that are paying, so you're picking up somebody else's share.
That's what it looks like.
Well, that's, that's.
What it looks like to me.
In essence, that's, in essence, that's what's happening because of, and again, it goes to the shift. So, you know, so you get, you get, if, if a, a community of Barnesville, if they, if their whole appraisal system comes in, and, and their, their valuation falls within 98, or let's say they're 100% of what they're, what they, the list should be, that they're, based on their, their recorded sales, they're not going to have an increase. But ag land had a, has had a significant increase. So Barnesville stays down, you go up. Barnesville plays, pays less, you pay more. That's, it, it's not like, it's not like we're getting 6,000 more extra dollars to spend. It's just that who we're getting it from changes.
That's what irritates me. I'm paying extra.
Well, I, 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 I get you, but.
Yeah, and there, I mean, I'm, I don't know where all of these, all of you live, but there have been nights on this over the years where it's all one jurisdiction, or one municipality to the, has come because there has been such a huge shift in the, the values in that one area. And last year, unfortunately, there was a shift in ag. And we're hearing that because of the sales that we're seeing in the communities going up, that, that hopefully that pendulum will slow down a little bit and equilibrium a little bit. But again, to your point, we are committed with those revenues over expenditures to making sure that it's paying it down.
One of my questions to him was going to be tonight, and I'll, and I'll, so I'll ask it right now, so you can hear. So right now, our budget is based on, we anticipate revenues and we anticipate expenditures, right? We, this is what we're, we're forecasting, how much money we're going to have come in, and we're forecasting how much we have go out. And within that portion that we have go out, how much money are we dedicating to savings? The only thing we're dedicating to savings is the Internal Service Fund, which is basically, we put so much money a year away for when we have to replace equipment so that, so that you, as a taxpayer, don't get hit hard all in one year.
Right.
So, so we, so that's the Internal Service Fund. The other.
I do the same thing as a farmer. I do the same thing.
Perfect. It's, and it's a good, it's a good, good deal, right? We get, we get a thumbs up on that? Okay. So, 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 so then the, the other thing that we have that we're dealing with right now is that our, our healthcare costs and premiums that are going, are skyrocketing. And so what the county is doing, like other major counties are doing, they're looking at the potential of self-funding in, in health insurance to help keep those costs down. It's just another way that we're working on things to help keep things affordable. And so, but in order for us to even get to that, we have to have a bank of money so that when we do go self-funded, we have to be able to pay, for example, the first three months of claims that would come in. And we don't have a bank account for that yet. So what we're doing right now is, is part of what you're seeing in our expenditures for 2024 is 250,000 we're putting in to help build that. In 2023, it was 200,000. So those are the only two things. And so that, so I've been, I, I'm asking this question, I asked it with our auditor when we were here, when, when they were presenting this. How much are we, are we budgeting to put into savings over and above that? And the answer has been none. And so if we have revenues over expenditures, those were unplanned, and they should be used to buy down the next year. That's, I've been preaching this for, for my 20 years on this board, that we, that, that should be used to buy down. It was, it was never intended to just say, okay, well, we got this, we didn't use all the money we needed, so let's just put it in the bank. Why don't we lower the property taxes? That's where I'm at on it. So did you, you want to answer my question?
Well, the, the answer is zero.
Okay.
And, and I did, I did just wanted to, to double down on our conversation earlier as far as utilizing revenues over expenditures. Over the last seven budget cycles, this board has, has reinvested the fund balance it's received, even on three years when it, even when, a total of three years when it lost, had expenses over revenues of $5 million on three, three years by itself. This board has reinvested $6.5 million of revenues over expenditures into the, the upcoming budget to, to keep that levy down.
Okay.
All we can say, we're trying.
Pardon?
All we can say is we're trying.
Yeah.
I know it's not satisfactory, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
Craig Harner from Glendon. I too am a farmer. Seems like we all have the same problem. And I really feel that we don't get heard. I, I, you guys have been very, oh, by the way, first I was going to say, thank you for serving on this, because I wouldn't want the job. Okay? But where do we go? Where do we go from here? You know, it's, now it's the state's problem. There's a few people here that left, they followed the rules, and they went out the door and talked to a gal out there. And I asked her to bring my phone in, so I broke the rules, but I got my stuff on here. I couldn't find my papers, and I took a picture. Okay, so I, um, um, one of the guys that I texted to come to the meeting, he says, you know, we're, the gal outside, she says, you know, well, it's the state's problem. They're, they're pushing this. How do we get representatives to represent us at the state? My representative doesn't represent me. I don't think he represents most of people in this room. You know, we had a, we had a rebellion here in the United States at one time because of that. Taxation without representation. Where's my representative? I asked him this at a county, at a township meeting, and he blew me off. And my wife got mad and said, I'm never going to those meetings again if you keep doing this. Okay? And we asked about what else is going on at the state? And this is off the topic, okay? And specific questions on what they're teaching, telling, mandating for teaching and all this stuff. And he blew me off, and he made fun of me in front of my community, and the community didn't laugh. They sat there because they knew I was right. And he, he turned it into a joke twice. You know, he's no longer elected, we got a new guy. But he turned it into a joke twice, the same question, and pretended like we didn't know what we were talking about. I get tired of it. What, what part of our budget at the county goes to Clay County Social Services, I mean, not, just social services? Food stamps, this kind of thing? And is this what's, is this what's increasing? I mean, I saw your pie chart, okay? You know, I'm, I'm not mocking you, okay? But I saw that. And I know at times, this is history, but there's, there's, the, people come to Clay County because we pay better for social services. I went to Hornbacher's a couple weeks ago, or Thanksgiving, you know, got some stuff, we've forgotten, baking stuff. And people in front of me were going like this. And then they scanned the phone, and it's like, I don't keep track of phones, but this is really old. It's got a cracked screen. It still works. Everybody that did this had a new phone. Do I buy that phone also so that the food stamps can be on the phone so they can swipe it with the scanner? I'm just asking, what are we, how, how do we make it so lucrative?
Well, I do want to say that people all the time pay for things with their phone that are not on food stamps.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think.
I'm uneducated in these things.
No, 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 I think it's fair to say that you can save your credit card and use it to pay anywhere. I mean, I, that's how my, my, my children pay for gas when they need to go pay for gas. So I, I just, I just want to clarify that that is not always the case.
Is it the case some of the time? I mean, I'm, I'm, am I buying people cell phones? Because, because the guys that are paying for the cell phone should get the new ones, and then we give the refurbished ones to people that need the cell phone.
We're not buying anyone's cell phones.
I'm just asking.
Well, I'm telling you, you're not.
Because, because there was a time in Far Texas.
Did I go to Hornbacher's? Every time. They've got a membership code.
Okay.
You save it up, you get a discount after a while. Most people in line in front of me do it, too. We're not buying people's cell phones.
I'm just asking about, okay, then I'll trim it down to our handouts or our services. Are they so much more that people don't want to live on that side of the river? I mean, I, I don't understand. It's really confusing to me. I know there was a sign in Far Texas, I had a, my dad, I had a picture of it. I have nothing wrong with, you know, migrants or whatever, my friends. But there was a sign down there that says, Clay County, Minnesota, best handouts.
Really?
This is a, this is, this is years ago. This is, okay, but I'm just saying, is that where a lot of our taxes are going?
Sir, I'd like to tell you, no.
Okay.
I've been part of this community for 16 years. I come from down there, okay?
I have no problem.
I'm staying here.
Okay, yeah, I got it, yeah.
We have spent a lot of time and a lot of, we have a lot of experience here and a lot of concern to where we make sure that we do not misspend funds.
Okay.
And that we make sure that we don't take more than we need. There has been a redistribution under state law, a redistribution that has hit the agricultural, our agricultural citizens harder than, than any, anyplace else. We're not getting any more money.
Okay.
Now, you've got a, you've got a pretty good guy who's, who's your state representative out there. I don't know if you've talked to him, and I don't know who it is you talked to, but he is from out in your neck of the woods, and he's new, and you can talk to him about.
Okay, this is a previous representative.
Well.
And I, I haven't talked to this guy.
Work with people that are here now.
But we've had guys talk to him, farmers, last week when he was in the area. Okay, I didn't know about that meeting. I'm sorry, am I taking all the time?
No. Mr. Chair, if I, if I, if I can respond to you when it comes to social services and, you know, I, and again, I, I'm probably the longest, well, I am the longest-serving commissioner on this board, and I've seen social services where, where it's been and where it's gone to.
Okay.
And, and what I, what I can tell you is the vast majority of, of where the critical costs come in are dealing with families that have, have, have issues with mental health, drug abuse, and those types of things. And we have to, as a county, step in on behalf of kids.
Yep.
And, you know, so take a look closely at our social service budget. You're going to see $2.5 to $3 million annually just on out-of-home placement that we have to deal with, with kids that have had problems that were not directly related, in, in the vast majority of the instances, not related to their own, you know, actions, but on, as a result of the actions of others. So some of, some of those things, we just have to step in on, and whether we like it or not, but we have to. We need to make sure that everybody stays safe in all of these communities. And unfortunately, we can't do that for free. You know, so, you know, you know, and again, your, your comment, you know, do people come here because maybe they, they get better? You used the word handouts. I'm going to.
Benefits.
Ben, you know, I'm going to say not necessarily to Clay County. They come here, they come here because they come to the state of Minnesota. It's the state of Minnesota who, who provides the vast majority of those funds, not Clay County. Clay County, you know, in some instances, we partner in some of those, some of those expenditures. We, we, and, and again, you've probably, if you've lived here long enough, you've heard the term unfunded mandates. And we have a lot of them in this county. And the state basically says, we're going to provide this much money for this service, and you're going to provide 20%, 50%, depending on what it is. So, so from that standpoint, yes, Minnesota is probably more welcoming to people who are neat.
And our youth are headed for South Dakota.
Pardon me?
If, if the people that came here for, for the, what was the proper word? I'm sorry. The benefits?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not being smart, I just forgot the proper word.
Well, I.
If, if the people that are coming here for the benefits were paying Minnesota taxes, they'd be like a lot of Minnesota youth and headed for South Dakota. Okay? Because taxes are light there, and they get to live decent, you know, everything's a little more equal.
I, again, I, part of our, part of our discussion that we're on, and over the last number of years, Clay County has, has consistently, for the last number of years, been the fourth largest growing county in the state of Minnesota. And it's not all poor people coming here.
I'm just, you know, so. Minnesota had a $10 billion-plus overrun last year and they spent it. And they redistributed a part of it.
10 billion.
10, B, yeah, billion, yes. Well, sorry, I misstated it, okay? And now this year, they're hitting us for another 10 billion. They spent it. It was an overrun. Well, being we got it, why return it to the people? If you paid that much tax, you should have it returned to you. And then you can decide what to do with it, you earned it. It shouldn't be redistributed. I talked to a neighbor, farmer, he said, you know what, I've got, I got a postcard in the mail, says I was gonna get like $5,000 back on the taxes we paid. He said, when the check finally came, it was 200 change.
Mr. Chair, I also agree with you that there's, we're all in our own pillar of what we can control.
Right.
And a lot of, a lot of the frustration that I'm hearing from your comments do have to deal with the state component. And you say, how do I, how do I make change? You make change by voting and communicating.
I've done all that.
Right.
I got all the stickers from the last 10 elections in my billfold, just for a joke.
That's great. But the other part is, we have to share our story and as we advocate at the state level for what we're hearing in the county, we're sharing your perspective. We're also sharing our concern with some of the decisions that happened in St. Paul and how it will affect us here. We can't change that at this meeting.
We're not getting listened to, you or me. This is my gripe, I'm sorry, Jenny. Why distribute, redistribute? I asked my wife, I said, you know, the neighbor, trying not to use names, I said, the neighbor said, you know, he got a check, it was supposed to be 5,000, it came out to be 200 change.
And he had no voice in that.
Right, right, I'm not, but this is where, how do we, how do we, how do we get Minneapolis' attention? Okay? I didn't get a check. Well, I'm in a higher income bracket than the people that got redistributed to. I'm tired of working for somebody else's stuff. My taxes, 41%, 22%, 47%, 22%, 23% and 23%. Okay? I'm with the rest of them, I don't know who's went down. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? You must have came here to say something, so. Now's your chance. Okay.
My name is Tim Ockery, I'm over in southeastern part of Clay County. I've got kind of a question, probably it's something that can't be handled by the county, but do the homestead exclusion, when was the last time that was increased? Does anybody know?
Lori, can you help us out there?
I mean, that exclusion amount?
Yeah, it just increased for next year.
What is, wha-
It was 76 and it went up, I don't even know what that was.
Where you would qualify for homestead credit?
What's that?
Where you'd qualify for the homestead credit?
Yeah, well, the deduction, so what happens-
Need a microphone.
You get a tax capacity and then based on that number, they reduce it by a certain percentage.
Yep.
Yeah, so they reduce it by a certain percentage and as your value goes up, then your exclusion gets to be less. And so it used to be 415,000 was that, was that limit. And so that has increased a little bit and then the $76,000 maximum, that's where it's at, was at a maximum and that's increased as well.
Okay. You know, in reality, that's not keeping up pace with what, what this other-
You're absolutely correct. It is not keeping up pace.
Those are one of the things that I think, I don't know, it's probably a state issue that needs to be addressed on that, I don't know. Yeah, I've got quite an increase on all of my properties too and they're all over the I've got one individual property that went up over 60%. It was another issue with the, I don't know if it's the county or the state, but where I had to take acres out of production for the buffer areas.
You can thank Governor Dayton for that.
Anything for that.
Thank Governor Dayton for that one, that was-
You know-
State.
I was glad to do it, it needed to be done, but it's not a high, it doesn't produce me the dollars and that property went up. But I just wanted to view my thoughts on that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And next? One more time, anybody else? And last chance, anybody else? Okay.
Mr. Chair, after receiving your feedback and the feedback of our citizens here tonight, which we greatly appreciate, I would make the request of this board that Ms. Johnson and I bring forward a resolution for final adoption of Budget 2024 during next week's board session.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. I think with that, we'll continue on with our meeting then. And we're down into committee reports. Jenny, you want to start us off this week? Thank you for coming, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to go back to November 21st to report. I apologize for missing our last scheduled meeting, but I did have an ill child, so. On the November 21st, I attended the Personnel Issues Committee. There were a variety of issues that we talked over at that meeting, most of which have already been heard at the November 28th meeting. There are some, we did pass forward the end of the year items that this board has approved moving towards. And then that evening, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. We did have a couple of hearings that took place, really good feedback, certainly felt that we took into account the concerns that we were hearing from rural township and residents on that, hopeful that we can address some of the ordinance violations and then go forward with an approval of a potential proposal later, but that was, one of those hearings was rejected. On November 27th, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting in Fergus Falls. We had updates on all of the programming and certainly, as Ms. Commissioner Campbell alluded to, there are a substantial amount of mental health concerns and needs within our, all of our counties and they continue to, through the contract, work quite well with county staff to make sure that we're providing the vital services that are needed while addressing budget concerns. That afternoon, I attended the Withdrawal Management Substance Use Committee project update, really great updates from GERTS in regards to how that project is moving forward. If you're able to drive by there, it certainly has a visible change in how the build is going, close to closing that up soon. Thankfully, we've had good weather that has helped with that. There was a little bit of a delay when we did receive that rain towards the middle of November, I believe, but they were able to deal with that and move forward. In that afternoon, we also had the DMV construction update. As you all know, we are moving forward with that because our space in the center mall is reaching the end of that, so we're hoping that that is towards completion at the end of next summer, early fall. Thank you for the action that this board took earlier tonight, it's really important to get that progress, or project moving. November 29th, I attended the Masters Facilities Task Course for the Moorhead School District. They are in the process of working through a facilities needs update. The enrollment numbers are increased at a substantial rate and it was interesting to hear reports from them on facilities and lifespans and projects that they may need to address sooner rather than later. On November 30th, I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting at our Resource Recovery Facility. A really long discussion in regards to the BOEMAG that needs to be replaced as, for this board's knowledge, that's one of those items that we budget for with that account to make sure that we're not having a million-dollar hit on the levy when we do need to replace that. We are nearing the lifespan of the one that we have out at the landfill. Really good questions from both facilities that are both organizations that submitted a, what are they? They submitted the proposals, proposals, sorry. It was a long night, I can't-
Good word.
Submitted the proposals and really making sure that we're addressing the issues that we're having at the landfill with a future machine, particularly with wheels and wire cutters and all of those things. That was forwarded to another meeting to discuss later. That afternoon, or early morning, I had a City of Moorhead, Commissioner Campbell was present at that, working with Faustia Are, she has a large grant proposal that they've been able to secure millions of dollars to update a building in Moorhead with the new food mall that they're talking about, looking for this board's, just a letter of support, not a financial contribution, but a support for the need in the community. And that discussion item will come to this board at a later date. On December 1st, I attended a discussion with the University of Minnesota Extension and Clay County Committee in regards to the Extension Educator position that is open, that natural resources position, making sure we're looking through the applications that we had received and forwarded a recommendation for interviews to a later date. And on Sunday, December 3rd, traveled to the Association of Minnesota Counties Conference in St. Paul, Minneapolis. I really appreciate the feedback from all of the community members that were here tonight because so much of the discussions that we had there really do stem around the fact that we're concerned about Western and rural Minnesota's voice at the Capitol and making sure that, how do we share our story in the most effective way, particularly being a border community? That is a challenge, a resident brought that up today, and making sure that that voice is echoed in all of the policy platforms that we have at the Capitol this year. I, one, want to thank the citizens for allowing us to go down to that. I think it's, the association has just done a fantastic job of being such a strong voice for all of the counties statewide, particularly since this county does not pay a lobbyist to lobby the best interests of our needs. The association is really providing that for us and making sure that if there's testimony needed from our side of the state, they're allowing us the opportunity to share that with our legislators. It is a challenge and it will continue to be a challenge, but certainly, we have a platform that I'm excited to continue to advocate for. That afternoon, on Monday, December 4th, I am a part of Representative Michelle Fishbox's Egg Advisory Committee. That committee did meet virtually to make sure that we're sharing with the Congresswoman challenges that we're particularly seeing in the egg center of our region and updates so that she may portray that concern at the state level as well. And there are lots of different keynote speakers and different breakout sessions that I attended while there and really appreciate hearing about all the collaborations that communities and counties are doing to save as much money as possible. And then, sorry, two weeks is a long time. Yesterday, I attended interviews with the Extension Committee for that natural resource position, making sure that we're reflecting the concern and the need for master gardener presence. Certainly appreciate the fact that those individuals did fit that need quite well and we're hopeful that the university will be making a hire before the end of December. And, Mr. Chair, I believe that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Kenan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Wednesday, the, excuse me, on November 29th, I had a virtual meeting with AMC Transportation regarding the five proposed amendments that were going to be brought forward at the Policy Committee meetings that were held later. And we just kind of reviewed those to try to see if there's, you know, to see if there was any support or opposition to those amendments. And those amendments were forwarded on, and I believe were approved on the floor for the conference. And when I talk about amendments, they're platform amendments that AMC has adopted that deals with different areas of transportation. And I'm not going to go into the details of each of those, but they're all in the interest of things that we work hard for, for transportation in rural Minnesota. On November 30th, we had the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting, Commissioner Moshe reported on that, I'm not, I don't have anything to add to that. We will be going over that BOEMAG proposals at this month's meeting. Then on the December 4th, or 3rd, 4th, 5th and 6th, we were at the AMC Policy Committee I did attend, as I mentioned earlier in our meeting, I did attend a Housing Task Force meeting that was put on by NACO. There's some interesting things that are, they're looking at from a national standpoint in regarding housing needs and if you aren't following the news, there's a significant number of housing units needed throughout the country, there's a significant amount of housing needs in Clay County and there's a significant amount of housing needs in Moorhead. And, you know, so that was the question that I asked Darley, was one that, you know, developing a strategy and a plan, because what is that? Because it's an overwhelming deal and I know Commissioner Ebringer is involved now with this deal, a joint deal between this side of the river and the other side of the river and it's gonna, it's a huge issue, housing is. And it also can become an economic development issue. Excuse me, and then I, once again, I did like the presentation by Gordon Graham, I just liked that guy, I think he's pretty good, keynote speaker, does a great job. And I did also attend the MCIT Annual Meeting. We adopted their budget for 2024 and nothing new there, Clay County didn't win any awards, not to my surprise, but we'll work on it. And then today, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting where there were two items that were proposals that were brought before us and one was by Mark Sloan and that was for some funding for the next-generation 911 data. And again, these are to complete the necessary addressing that's going to be needed for the dispatch center. This is critical information that's going to be important to have throughout Clay County and rural Clay County so that when somebody does call dispatch, like the story that was said here, that they can have good direction to give. And so with that, Mark Sloan had run out of money within his budget for it and he had, he's calculated out that with another 160 hours being resourced out to Pro West, that for $20,900, they can complete that project and get it ready to go to dispatch. And our committee is recommending, and that'll be coming before this board later, but are recommending us to approve that one. There was also another request from a unit within the Sheriff's Department for some funding and that one did not receive support at this point in time. So I think, I think we had already worked out what we were going to pay for with those public safety dollars on behalf of all of our personnel that we felt were part of that plan coming down through the state. And unfortunately, with our limited number of dollars, and we just felt that the request that was there could have really opened it up to an awful lot of other areas that would have been difficult to support, so. And difficult, and when I say difficult, difficult to support from remaining funds that we have for that purpose. That concludes my report.
Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also attended the AMC Annual Conference. I got down early Sunday and attended the Board of Directors meeting. We finalized the AMC legislative policy priorities, did some other issues. Monday, I attended the Public Safety- Monday, I attended the Public Safety Policy Committee meeting, and some presentation panels that were very interesting. We also finalized our platform and reviewed what we were going to submit for our position for the next legislative session. Tuesday, had General Assembly. Make sure I didn't miss something here. Oh, we did have the opening session on Monday with the AMC President McGuire, and then Governor Tim Walz presented to us. I too really appreciate Gordon Graham's perspective on things. He did a great job as one of the keynote speakers. Tuesday, we had General Assembly, some keynote speakers. There were various workshops on both days. On Wednesday, there were, there were two speakers, and then I remained there to help the Public Safety Committee present its platform proposals, which were submitted and passed. Later that day, I had a phone conference with Jill Manette, who's Fargo HR Director, Chad Peterson, Fire Chief Dirksen in Fargo. We had a discussion on some of the procedures we're going to use for the open director position. It's going to be open at the end of the month for the Triple RDC, and we finalized the composition, the interview panels. Thursday, had a remote committee meeting with the Legislative Committee for the Emergency Communication Board. We covered some discussion on the subject matter expert who's being sought to bring the technical committee back up, start meeting again, look to update our statute. We discussed the SECB website changes and some education proposals. Today, I attended in Fargo with Fargo City Hall, one of the, basically, the first preliminary meeting we've had with the proposal ending homeless task force. Talked about some of the political alignment. They want to have a collaborative capacity that works on both sides of the river. There's some discussions about trying to get both governors together and funding that can be available for this part, for our, our community in looking at some of this. One of the primary things we want to keep in mind is we simply want to get the subject matter experts to come up with some solutions and goals and have a political, political entities that can be there to support them. It's very early in the game, and we will, we will, I'll keep you apprised of developments as we, as we have them. Then after that, I had Public Safety Committee, which Commissioner Campbell already covered. I will say the Next Generation 911 GIS data validation that we're going to have presented next week, great idea, really need it, and the committee's supportive of it. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Paul?
My name is Seth. I too went to the AMC. I area of Public Health and Services.
You're Mike.
I too, and, hi. So, I too also went to the AMC Conference, focusing in, on the area of policy work that I'm involved with, with Public Health and Human Services. We did deep dives on a broad, a bunch of broad issues. However, toward the end, we've been working for two main priorities to go into the legislature with, one, the ongoing problem with the software involving reports and reimbursements through the state for being done, to redo that, modernize that software. The second thing, as we've talked about before, also, dealing with high-fuety. We wanted to do a deep dive in types of treatment centers. Fact that, and I believe it was over the last 15 years, approximately, we've lost over 800 beds in Minnesota. Just seems like an amazing amount, and trying to bring, bring that back so we don't have people that need treatment stuck in jails or not being brought on the street. Along with that, we had a good discussion about the $48 rule, and once again, kind of repeating the problem that, that people need to be released unless they have a appropriate treatment facility it puts someone into. So either they're released or they're held for their own safety needs in a, in a jail or some other type of detention, which isn't where we want them to be. Also, we did some work and got information involving 988, Suicide Prevention and Crisis. We had a presentation by regional coordinators who work with our, who work with our Public Health Department, and that's through the Department of Health, those positions that I worked with. Also, I had children's mental health, mainly the big discussion there, we're continuing to work on the, the website, that update of that. It's getting better all the time, and hopefully, that site will help coordinate for people not only within other nonprofits to know maybe how to coordinate and send referrals to maybe somebody more specialized in that person's need, and then also for the consumer out there, just having a place to be able to check out, you know, in case they just want to go online and find a, excuse me, what am I saying? A facility that can help them with their, their issues. The other part was on that same day. At the end of the day, was the Clay County Collaborative. We have a new coordinator that has been in place for about six weeks, really going over the whole program, actually, and she's been doing trainings, webinars, been doing some trainings down in the cities, and kind of revaluing the structure and making sure we're in a good place for the, for her to start. And with that, we're trying to make sure that our finances are in a correct place, and we're working through the guidance of the state first, and then if there's something, adjustments we need to make in line items or those type things, we'll start building a new, a new accounting system, you know, to help us with that. If there's something beyond that, there may be an ask here to the county, but not at this point. The other thing, we did our, for lack of better words, our executive committee, and anyway, our chairperson is Tiffany Ross. This will be her second year. I was voted in to be the vice chair, and our parent representative is the same as last year, Deanne Overmull. And then I wanted to tell everybody, Mike McCarthy, after his years and years of service, he termed out, so we need to find a new appointment. And I would guess we do that in January. Is that about right? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we would, we'd want to, yeah, we'd want to get that information so we could get that going, yes.
Okay, very good. And today, I had the privilege of being down at the annual convention for Zollawater and made a little presentation there and hustled back home for the, our meeting. So, anyway, thank you.
Tuesday, November 28th, we had a audit committee meeting, and I don't know if we've got the final results of that yet, but nothing can be said about that yet till everybody signs off on it, I guess, so. And that afternoon, I had, we had interviews with the county, Assistant County Engineer, and I think we'll have results of that on meeting next Tuesday. So, and then again, I was with AMC meetings, like everybody else was. Interesting meetings, you know, a lot of sessions to go through. Went through a couple of them, like, put on by Venmo County, how to choose your chairman and vice chairman, and I feel we're way out ahead of that. We got our policy, you know, and he talked about 45 minutes and didn't really come up with what you're supposed to do. You can either do it this way or that way, or, I think everybody does it on their own, which vice chairs or chairs can stay on for more than one year or whatever, or some counties do it every year. We trade like we do. It's not interesting, that last day, the courthouses of Minnesota, the guy that gave that, very interesting, probably see a picture of every courthouse in the state of Minnesota. I mean, I don't know if we learned anything over that, but it was interesting. Then we extended the business meeting the last day. Then Friday, you know, I, I know we've got really good employees here and they work hard, but they're fun employees, too. We went, I went to the Christmas party on Friday night with them, and it's a fun group, too. I already, I already knew that they were good employees, but they're fun employees, too, so, they had a great time there. Thank you for the employees inviting me, so, those are my means.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I know we're running late. I did, because it was such a long, three-week report, I did miss a few. I attended the AMC Extension Committee meeting, in which I serve as chair. Good information and updates that we'll be working on with the MOU discussion that will come up later next year. I attended my Associate, or Association of Minnesota Counties Policy Committee meeting, the Environment and Natural Resources Committee, and yesterday, I also attended the Association of Minnesota Counties Tax Forfeiture Work Group. Important, important dialogue that we're working on, getting that information to the state leaders that need that as we move forward with that Supreme Court will mean to counties. So I apologize for that delay, but wanted to make sure I noted that.
Hey, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 20, 28th, I participated in the State Auditor Exit Interview. I talked with Ms. Johnson today. They were just waiting on one final document, and then we will be bringing forward that report to this board. I participated in the Assistant County Engineer interviews, which has been addressed. On the 29th, I met with Stephen Slick from AE2S in regards to the Water District and Steering Committee meeting. We're also in the process of setting up a meeting with Moore Public Service to further that dialogue in regards to Moore Public Service in the Water District. I did ask, or just asked that, within their future agendas, this board approved, being the fiscal host of, of the establishing of the Water District. I just asked that permanent agenda had to be placed on, on the agenda so that as we pay the bills, all counties are up to date on that. I participated in the SWAC meeting that's been covered. After the meeting, I met with Corey on a series of different issues, internal service adjustments, the Lichate Contract in the Becker County MOU, that was before you. 30th, I also dealt with the citizen concern. On the 3rd, I, 3rd through the 6th, I participated in the AMC Annual Conference that's been well-covered. In addition to that, there was also County Administrator Association meeting, so I appreciate the opportunity to participate in those sessions. On the 7th, participated in MCC JPA prep meeting. We have a short meeting scheduled for this Thursday. The, on the 7th, I participated in the statewide Affordable Housing RFP review. That was, dealt with that board today. On the 8th, spent some time with Jackie and Lori in preparation for truth and taxation this evening. Again, like Commissioner Gross, I participated or attended the holiday party, and just again want to reiterate, thanks for our holiday committee, not just for the efforts that they put in that night, but without their efforts throughout the year, we would not have that party, and again, it was a fun evening. On the 11th, I met with Jackie in regards to comments that Commissioner Gross had about his conference. We're looking at putting together some Clay County operations just to highlight and, and kind of solidify some of the things that we do here, and so we'll be bringing that forward to pick and then potentially before this board in the early part of next year. Just a few different items. One, we've been having issues with the front door of the courthouse, and they are going to be replacing the doors on December 14th and 15th, and that'll be, continue to be the main entrance for our citizens, so if they're coming to the courthouse, the main entrance is, is still the area that they would go to. And the last item I have is, I did receive an email this week from Joe Rezo from the Fargo Moore at EDC. They're looking to solidify their Board of Directors at their Friday meeting, and, and have asked if Commissioner Ebiger would be the appointee again for the, for 2024. And so I would look to the board's consideration, I guess, ask, first ask Commissioner Ebiger if that was something you'd like to continue to do.
Yes, I'm still interested.
And then if we could have a board, if the board wishes to have action on, on making that appointment.
Make a motion to appoint Commissioner Ebiger to such committee for the next year?
No second to that.
Motion to second the point, Mr. Ebiger to the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. Darren, got anything? Jackie must have something. Okay, we're adjourned.